Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the September 13th, 2012 Planning Board Work Session related to zoning for assisted living facilities. First, I'd just like to remind all Planning Board members to please try to remember to speak into the microphone so that those folks at home can hear us on the Channel 22. And I'll turn it over to Planning Director Rick Tainer to talk about assisted living.
Thank you. This is a referral from the City Council. The request was for the Planning Board to consider other zoning districts beyond the zoning districts where assisted living facilities are currently allowed. And we can get into that in a little bit, but one of the aspects of this is it's not quite as simple as just looking at other zoning districts because we also have to look at the permitting process and any dimensional or intensity regulations, parking regulations, and so forth, because many of our districts are really geared toward a particular use such as single residences. And once you insert a different use in there, it makes it, you have to look at all the other aspects of development. So, that's a fairly obvious, I think, statement. I just wanted to get that out there before we start the discussion. And I would have liked to have gotten this stuff to you earlier, but here it is. I put together a package of reference materials for your review, and we can use it for review during the meeting, and then assuming that this discussion goes on to another night, you'll have time to look at things at more leisure. The pages two and three are definitions related to assisted living from the existing zoning ordinance. So, we have definitions in there for assisted living facility, which breaks down into assisted living center and assisted living home, depending on the number of rooms or residents there are. Assisted living unit, which is a unit within an assisted living facility or a continuing care retirement community. And assisted living facility and assisted living unit are actually used in the zoning ordinance. The next definition, congregate care facility, I don't believe is used. It was something that we put in there when we were talking two years, two and three years ago about the continuing care retirement community proposal. So, we put a definition in really as a placeholder. And also on page three, there's a definition for continuing care retirement community that was also in there. Again, that's not something that is currently in the use table, it's not an allowed use in the city, but there's a definition in there for us to refer to. And then the final definition on page three, residential care facility is kind of a broad term, and it includes examples such as nursing home, rest home, convalescent home, rehab hospital, and hospice. So, it's a kind of a broad term to have all of those types of facilities that include really around the clock skilled nursing. On page four, we have the existing use table, and I've bolded the zoning districts where either assisted living facilities or residential care facilities are allowed in some way. You can see that in the residential zoning districts, from the first group of districts, from our rural to garden apartment, mobile home, all of those districts, the smaller types of facilities are allowed. Assisted living home, which is for five or fewer residents in an assisted living situation, and residential care facility for five or fewer residents. So, essentially, an assisted living facility for five or fewer residents, or a nursing home, or hospice, or something like that for five or fewer residents, are all permitted in all of the residential districts, subject to the same dimensional requirements as any other residential use in those districts for five or fewer residents. And so, for example, in the pick a district, I guess it would be the SRA district, I think? Is that the 15,000 square foot area? What is that? That's the acre. SRA district, which requires one acre per dwelling unit. We would allow an assisted living home for five or fewer residents on that one acre lot as well, by special exception. Moving over, a group in the mixed residence office and mixed residence business, same standards apply, except that in those districts, a residential care facility for more than five residents is also allowed by special exception. And then you have to move over to the business districts, the general business, gateway, and business districts. And those are the only districts where an assisted living center, an assisted living facility with more than five residents is permitted in our zoning. Now, one thing I'd like to point out about this is that we actually have facilities in the city that are non-conforming with this. I would point to the Mark Wentworth home, for example. More than five residents, not in a general business, business, or gateway district. So, we do have examples already, and there are a couple other facilities that are in residential districts. As a matter of fact, probably all of our assisted living facilities are non-conforming as to zoning. So, that's one thing you should keep in mind when you're thinking about whether these facilities, what types of impacts these facilities might have on the surrounding area, is that we have those facilities.
And those current facilities would fit under the current definition of assisted living facilities?
Yes. Yep. Or residential care facility, depending whether they're skilled nursing around the clock or just assisted living type of facility. So, you can see, and there's a couple of other districts, the office research district also allows a residential care facility, so essentially a nursing home for more than five residents by special exception. Are there any questions about the use table we're looking at right here?
I don't have a question about the use table. But the, I'm just wondering how you would clearly differentiate between a congregate care facility and a CCRC?
CCRC would have to have multiple levels of care. Go from independent to assisted to skilled nursing. A congregate care facility could just be any type of shared, it could be more or less independent, except that it has a shared dining hall. That would be, that could be the difference. So, you could have, and all of these things-
It's a little fuzzy.
It's fuzzy, because again, all the congregate care facilities that I know of, the independent living units have their own kitchenettes, but most of the people actually go to a common dining area to eat. So, it is somewhat congregate, although they could actually operate as individual units if they wanted to. So, there's, you do have that kind of overlap. You have to pigeonhole it wherever it fits best.
Right.
But I think the key difference between, with a congregate care-
Thank you.
With a congregate care facility is that it, I'm sorry, a continuing care retirement community, is that it has all three levels, the independent, the assisted, and then some type of skilled nursing, which may include dementia, Alzheimer's units as well. Any other questions on definitions or the use table? And so, just let's look at the map for a second, because this is where the districts really, the limitations of our zoning show up. I've tried to group the districts together, and the red districts, the B, GB, and GW, really stand out. Those are the districts where, right now, we allow an assisted living center, the larger assisted living facility. So, you can see, it's the Route One corridor, it's the west end, the area around the brewery and Plaza 800, and the button factory, the traffic circle, and Outer Market Street. So, those are basically the areas where assisted living centers are currently permitted in any way, either by right or by conditional use permit. Kind of, it kind of sets out the limitations. And also, one of the things that you may want to consider when you're considering appropriateness of various districts is whether you want to have the current type, one aspect of the current zoning is that it restricts assisted living facilities primarily to places where residents, where you can't actually have a residential facility. So, you're actually segregating the seniors and disabled and handicapped from the rest of the community. So, that's just one thing to think about. And I, you know, this, so right here, we're just looking at uses, we're not looking at intensity of use, we're just looking at the raw use. And so, the next thing we want to get into is the intensity of use. And so, on, just as a, as a, an overview, and I'm sure you know both of these already, but on pages five and six are the dimensional intensity standards for the, on page five, the residential and mixed residential districts, and on page six, the business and industrial districts. And remember that the, that these, the larger facilities, and this may be appropriate, are not allowed in any of the residential districts. You may want to, if you're considering allowing assisted living facilities in the residential districts, you may want to put, you know, look at intensity of, intensity of use. So, we do allow by special exception, in all of these residential districts, the residential, the assisted living facilities with five or fewer residents, which really does correspond to a single-family home. That's really the same type of density as a single-family home. But then you get to, when you get to a larger facility, then you're going over to the GB, gateway, and business districts, and you have, you have a different sized lot requirement, larger lot requirements in general. One thing that is very, that is important to think about is that if we were to, in the areas where we do allow these uses, we do not have any restriction on the density of the uses. So, when you think about, you know, you look at the residential use table, in addition to the lot area, generally, there's a lot area per dwelling unit requirement. When you look at the general business and gateway, you've got a lot area requirement of an acre, but no density, residential density requirement, because the assumption is that there aren't going to be freestanding residential units there. We don't have, we don't allow those in those districts. So, if you were to then allow assisted living centers in these areas, you would want to probably change this somehow to put a, some type of limit on the density that you allow. You may not want to allow 100 units, 100 beds or units on an acre of land. You may only want to have 10 or 20 on an acre of land. So, that's one of the things we'll have to think about. Then the final thing I wanted to show you was, just as an example, the only, the only example we've ever looked at this situation is when we looked at the continuing care retirement communities a couple of years ago. So, I've just excerpted from the ordinance that was presented to the City Council, the site requirements and development standards that were presented at that time. And so, this gets into that issue a little bit. It doesn't talk about, it doesn't talk directly here about residential density. What actually was controlling residential density, to some extent, was a parking requirement per dwelling unit, which I didn't copy here, but because it was, I think it adds some complexity to the whole thing. But this basically, in this case, said that the site should be at least five acres, and that the side yards were increased to 50 feet, and the setbacks from residential districts were increased to 100 feet. So, these are the types of things that, again, if you want to look at adding assisted living facilities to other zoning districts, things that should be considered. And then the final thing is that the bottom of the first page, I've put some questions in to consider. The first one is, which districts are appropriate or inappropriate to zone for assisted living facilities for elderly and disabled or handicapped residents? The second question is, what scale of development should be allowed in each district? And should we be looking at building height and bulk, setbacks and lot coverage, and then the number of residents per facility, or per acre, or per square foot, some type of density or intensity measure? And the third question is, how should assisted living facilities be authorized? They could be allowed by right, just subject to whatever dimensional and intensity standards we specify in the zoning ordinance. They could be referred to as special exception from the zoning board of adjustment, or they could be a conditional use permit from the planning board. And we have examples of both of those in the, in the existing use table. And I would say generally that my philosophy is that the smaller scale uses could be the types of things that would be referred to the zoning board of adjustment, because they're really, they're looking at impacts, but they're not looking at site development. And when you get to the larger scale, once you get to 20 or 30 units, I'm not sure what the threshold would be, that's the point at which the Planning Board really gets involved in detailed site plan review considerations. And so, it makes sense to go to the site plan for both the conditional use permit and the site plan approval. So, that's what I have, and I guess I would just think it would be appropriate to open it up for discussion.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. So, who has initial thoughts, questions, based on Rick's presentation? Yes, Councilor Cleaver.
I just have a question. Wasn't there a lot on Route One that was considering assisted living? So, according to this, wouldn't that be allowed?
No. What was, it was confusing, because what was happening, this is the lot adjacent to the Armed Forces Reserve Center, opposite Owen Park, and that is, that's one of those, in that pink strip right there, you can see between the two red things. And the issue there is that that's zoned office research, and it's been very difficult for property owners in that area to develop under the zoning. And so, the applicant has come to the Planning Board a number of times for a number of things. Initially, a number of years ago, he came and the Planning Board recommended a zoning change that would have allowed a brew pub in that area, if you recall that. It was a large master plan of the whole, of two lots in that area, not just that, not just the vacant lot, but also the lot where the Armed Forces Reserve Center is. And the Planning Board recommended that to the, worked with the developer over many months, and recommended to the City Council, but that was, the neighbors objected to it, and so the City Council did not approve it. And then, probably, I don't know, the spring or something like that, he came back and requested some further consideration, and we, and the Planning Board asked me to look at how, what we could do to make that, to improve the developability of that area. And what I had recommended, I'd just gone through the table of uses, and also the dimensional requirements, and had recommended some easing of the minimum lot area. This is the most restrictive zoning district in the city, and so we had recommended reducing the minimum lot area from three acres to two acres, and recommended reducing the frontage requirement, I think from 300 feet to 200 feet, and also had looked at a couple of uses. And one of the uses that I had proposed to look at was assisted living center. And again, that was, there were concerns raised about that, and so again, the City Council, the Planning Board recommended it again, but the City Council again voted it down. So, it actually, it actually never got to the point of being rezoned, and actually, the property owner is still looking for some way to be able to develop the property.
Any initial feedback from board members?
And I would say also, if you have any other, any other requests for additional information that I could provide, I mean, I've, this is like a first cut, and so I'm certainly willing to go back, and if you, if you think you need more information to start making a decision, I can certainly do that. One of the things I was hoping to do, but ran out of time, was to highlight, highlight the lots in here, the available lots that might be over two acres or something like that, so we could get a sense of development potential.
Yeah. Yes, Anthony?
Rick, is there some sort of, for an assisted living facility, almost like a kind of critical mass of number of residents you'd have to make an entity like this worthwhile? I mean, what sort of size or type of operation would we expect to see at a minimum for someone who wanted to put one of these together?
Yeah. You know, I, there are different types of things. So, like a commercial type of facility, they are, they tend to be in the range of, you know, I don't know, well over 100 units, in terms of, of a mix of, a mix of units. I think that, you know, 40 or 50 units is probably a reasonable base. However, there are other types of assisted living facilities. My son used to be a caregiver in an assisted living facility in Washington DC that I think was probably only for five, five or six residents. They were, you know, very heavily handicapped residents, and they, it was a very intense, maybe even qualified as a residential care facility rather than assisted living. But you have these types of smaller facilities that are, tend to be more of the nonprofit type of thing.
Yes.
Rick, I think you mentioned, just toward the end, which spurred some thought of my part concerning whether a project might go for a special exception, or might come before the Planning Board for site review. I think we need to be cautious on that threshold, because reflecting back on multi-dwelling units, the threshold for not having to go through Planning Board site review in the past was something in the order of, I think, four or five units, and we realized that it was problematic, even, it could, depending upon the site, it could be problematic even at two units. And so, that same level of site development, I mean, we're still talking residential here, so we might want to be careful that we not exclude even the smaller ones from a site review process.
That's true. I guess we have to be careful to distinguish between residents and units. So, when you think about a five-resident dwelling, that may be, you know, a five-bedroom house, you know, so actually, it's probably, it's probably much smaller than a three-unit dwelling.
Okay.
So, I think that five might be, it might be larger than five. I'm not really sure. You know, it's going to be, when you get to site plan approval is really, and that would be also a question as to whether we want all of these to go to site plan approval or not, or whether it's just-
Possibly.
Or whether it's just conversion of an existing house.
Yes.
It's a good question.
Yes, John?
Well, just speaking in vague generalities, as I normally do.
I've led the way on that.
When I think about, when we talk about what districts are appropriate, inappropriate to zone for assisted living facilities, I think we have to kind of think about where we've seen some of these facilities and how they have worked in the area, and I think of River Woods, which is immense, and that's in a rural agriculturally, sort of like a rural residential agricultural area, but set back off the road, and the impact of the massing and the institutionalization of that whole area is not visible to the neighbors in that area. But I think, but at the same time, look at a place like Edgewood, is hardly visible to the neighbors, it's tucked in there, and serves an important role in terms of having residents have easy access to their family that's there. And I really think that's a very important aspect of this whole thing, to not put our, the people who need assisted care out in some industrial park, but have them near residential areas, but have them, but have them, have the setbacks as such that the facility, you know, that is sensitive to the buildings around them. I'm also thinking of like Huntington Common up in Kennebunk, or, which is another assisted living place. That's way off the road there, but it's in, clearly, the access, if you go up to that area, is a residential, a rural residential area, but you'd never know that that facility was in there. So, I think it's hard to, I guess where I'm going with all of this, and I think about it, and my thoughts are, is that it's hard to really draw a specific line about where these things go, but I think it's more important, the visual aspects in a way, how these things fit in without impacting negatively the residential aspects around them. But they belong, they belong near residential neighborhoods, I feel, philosophically, I feel that way.
Thank you. That sort of relates to something that I guess I was thinking about as Rick was talking, which was how this might all relate to where we're headed in terms of form-based zoning, because it seems like potentially kind of an interesting opportunity to-
Well, it's, it's difficult, I think that what we're looking at in form-based zoning is really the downtown area, the historic core, and so, probably, it would be very easy for those types of facilities to fit into that area, provided they, because they're larger facilities, and a lot of the development that's going on in the downtown is larger development, but it would be, it would be harder to do that type of form-based zoning right now in our outlying residential areas, just because it's a huge process, huge project to do that, and-
Right.
You can only do a little bit at this time. But I think that the, I think that the point that I think you're both talking about is, how do we allow development to come in and really focus on protecting the neighborhood rather than protecting, rather than restricting the use? And that's, I think that's what you're really saying.
Exactly.
And that, so that is, that is related to the concept of form-based zoning.
Right.
It's a different, it's a, it's not, it's not dictating form, the way form-based zoning is prescribing form, but it's prescribing the buffers.
Being attentive to it, at least, right.
Yes, yeah. So, in a way, what I think what you might, what this might lead to is defining buffers based on the size of the facility.
Yes, Anthony?
I think John's point is well made. I would also think that another, you know, the gateway, I think, does make sense for this, in that-
The gateway district?
Gateway district, yeah. In that it abuts residential districts, and I think it's also consistent with the idea, at least the vision that I understood when we enacted the gateway district, the idea of trying to encourage sort of mixed use and commercial with residential. And so, while, you know, I guess there could be some concern that at least, as things stand now, you could be putting these facilities out in areas with little direct contact with residential units. If this were to come, if the gateway were to really start being developed the way we saw, they could be great sort of early seed developments, if that sort of even makes sense, to start getting residents, residential elements in these projects out in the gateway district.
And one example might be the vacant pad at the Yocuns Development, the site that they haven't proposed development for yet. They'd be right next to a hamburger place and a pharmacy, but it'd be, it's got some, you know, convenient to, convenient to, to retail uses, and also not too far off the beaten path for residential uses.
Yeah.
So, and that is, that is one of the areas right now where we do allow them.
Right.
So, that is probably, that's probably our largest area where we allow them right now.
I think what I'm struggling with is just the difference in the different types of facilities. And so, if we're talking about a difference between a facility where the need for medical attention is high versus where it's low, I think that also affects the need for a walkable environment. And in the gateway district, yes, there are retail offerings nearby, but not the most walkable environment to have people, a large facility with a large number of residents needing to walk somewhere. So, I guess where, and what I keep reading through is the series of definitions, and trying to really understand the distinct differences, both visually and who are the residents, who are living in each of these different definitions?
And, and I think it's important, that's an important point, and one of the things about these facilities is that they are an assisted living facility, oftentimes it's thought of as a facility for seniors, but it could just as well be a facility for people with a certain type of disability, and it's, so it's not, it's not restricted to seniors in that case. I don't think any of these, although, although many of these are typically developed for seniors, they can also include non-senior, handicapped, disabled people as well. So, and you're right, there's, I guess the, the fact that it's an assisted living facility means that somebody needs assistance in at least one of their, or I'm sure it's one or three of their, of their daily living needs, there's a definition.
I don't mark it.
But the, they require assistance with daily living activities, but do not require skilled nursing and medical care provided in a nursing home. So, these are people who, you know, tend to be largely ambulatory, or at least mobile, and, but need some type of assistance during the day, whether it's with preparing food or dressing, or, you know, taking, somehow taking care of themselves. So, you're right, the level of intensity, if we're, if we're at a nursing home area, probably less important, the walkability would be less important, but when you're at this level of lower need, then walkability is important.
Yeah. Brian raises two points that I've been thinking about. One of them was something that came up when we were talking about the proposal for Borthwick a couple of years ago, proximity to the hospital or medical, I don't know to what extent we feel that that's relevant in terms of- feel that that's relevant in terms of site location, because I would think that most, most places within the city would be relatively.
Well, again, again, think about.
X number of minutes or whatever it is. I mean, it's, it's almost in some ways an irrelevant issue, you know?
We have, we have Edgewood and we have Mark Wentworth.
Right.
So we, we have these facilities that seem to operate fine.
Fine.
Yeah, so proximity to the hospital probably is not that much of an issue.
A pressing thing, right.
Clipper Home, isn't that an assisted?
Yes, Clipper, yes, yep, yep.
And that's in a residential.
Yep.
But tucked away.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes, Councilor Clayber.
I don't know if this is the time to talk about this, but when we did talk about this at the city council, we had representatives from Edgewood and Sunbridge, I think is what they call that, Clipper Home one. Do you remember that meeting? I don't know if anybody remembers it, but we had representatives from those two facilities come, and what they're concerned about with new construction and new assisted living facilities is that there is no legal requirement that any facility has to take Medicaid. So Edgewood and Sunbridge both take Medicaid. So if you were to go to Sunbridge or, or Edgewood and you were a full paying customer, you're subsidizing those Medicaid people. So what they're afraid of is that if we have new assisted living or whatever facility, nursing, whatever, and they don't have to have Medicaid patients, they don't have to accept Medicaid patients, it's going to be harmful to Edgewood and Sunbridge because the cost for going to the new facility is going to be lower because you're not subsidizing the Medicaid patients. So everybody that is a full paying customer at Edgewood and Sunbridge is going to move out and go to the brand new facility, and that's gonna, that could potentially put Edgewood and Sunbridge out of business. And then we're living in a community where we don't have any Medicaid beds for the elderly. So I don't think, I think we asked Sully the question, and he said you can't, refresh my memory if I'm wrong, you can't require a facility to take Medicaid patients or Medicaid clients. So the whole issue to me is a little scary because if we build these facilities and they're not taking Medicaid patients, it's going to put what we, the good facilities that we do have at risk. So I don't know if that's my.
It's interesting that you raise that because it speaks to one of my concerns with the proposal a couple of years ago, which was sort of the economics is tied to the demographics and sort of who are we attracting to this? And, you know, obviously, we're particularly interested in meeting the needs of the citizens who already live in the city, or at least sort of family members of people who live here, rather than people with extraordinary wealth who can afford really expensive places that come from far away for some reason. So I think you really, you raise a really important point.
And one, one, one way to get at that would be, and it's beyond me, but I'm sure it can be done, is to do a market study of, you know, the demand for assisted living facilities. Is there a shortage, is there a shortage of assisted living facilities? Do we need more? Or, so that would be one thing. If we found that there was a demand for it, then what you're suggesting wouldn't be a problem, because even if the existing people moved out, there'd be more people who want to move in. I mean, is there a waiting list for people who are looking to find assisted living facilities in this area? If there isn't, then what you're saying is a problem. The other way to look at it is, look at the size of those facilities and see if there is a niche that isn't being met, and, you know, if those facilities are, I have no idea how many beds there are in those facilities, but if they're 30 or 40 bed facilities, maybe we, you develop some 10 bed facilities and they, and you design your zoning to allow some 10 bed facilities so that you're not allowing something to come in that would compete, compete with existing facilities. And I don't know, I don't know any of the economics of it, and that's something we would have to find out more about.
Oh, here we're getting into a philosophical debate, but it's a good point that you raised. I'm wondering if, this is not, I don't know whether you can do this in zoning, but whether if you do approve new assisted living facilities, that a certain percentage of them have to take Medicaid, certain, a certain percentage of the beds would have to take Medicaid.
Well, I think that that was what we were, what Bob Sullivan was saying we couldn't do. I mean, you could do something a little bit different than that, which is to have an affordability requirement, you know, have a.
Right. That's what we tried to talk about a couple of years ago, yeah.
So you couldn't tie it to Medicaid.
Which gets complicated, but.
But I'm sure there's a waiting list at all these facilities right now. I don't, I mean, we've just tried to put my mother in one of these facilities, and there, there were waiting lists everywhere, and Medicaid situation is, it's a very real.
But I agree that, I think there is a real need for market analysis based on the market here in the seacoast.
Right.
Not somewhere else.
Right.
Like as they tried to do the last time. William?
What a good point. If it's not required, what were the economics or the reasoning that Sunbridge and Edgewood do accept Medicaid patients? What was?
I don't know whether it just goes so far back that that's the way they did it then, or, I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just assuming that it's.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering why they presented a report saying that a new facility wouldn't? That's what I was kind of wondering.
Right. And you could be right, a new facility might decide to take Medicaid patients. I think one of the things we talked about at the city council level, which you brought up, is, you know, us baby boomers, you know, you have to assume that that population is going to increase, the number of people looking for assisted living, nursing homes, CRCs, whatever, because of the baby boomers.
Right. So this.
You and I are going to be looking for.
Exactly. As I deal with my mother, I understand.
I hope not that soon, Dan. We don't want to lose you.
Well, when you were talking about walking too, I think of seniors walking outside these facilities, and that dictates right off the bat that they not be on busy streets, that they be in secluded areas so that they can get out, but not be subjected to traffic.
It's almost like incorporating green space or a good portion of the land that they build upon as parks or places for them to.
So when we talk about the gateway, it's not exactly.
There's not much room.
Right, right.
There's not a lot of room anywhere.
Right.
How much land does, like Riverwoods take up?
A lot.
It's huge. And it's two campuses on either side of.
It's also, it's a conglomeration of different types of facilities too, I believe, right?
Yeah, it would be your CCRC, a mega CCRC.
Would it be, I guess I'm asking, if we were to lift Riverwoods up and place it in Portsmouth, is it physically possible? Okay.
No. I don't.
Maybe peas.
Okay.
And we're really not talking about that type of facility, because remember, we're not talking about continuing care retirement community, we're talking about assisted living. So we're talking about something probably more on the scale of an Edge Hill or something like that.
That's what I was gonna, because you had lots of definitions, and I'm kind of looking at, well, which one are we trying to focus on? The one with six or more residents, the one with five or fewer, you know, that's.
And, and again, the, you know, we have, we're pretty good in terms of the five or fewer residents. We allow those in all of our residential districts by special exception, and I've not seen a, a request for one. We require, we allow the residential care facility in all of our residential districts, again by special exception. So that, there doesn't seem to be a demand, either a demand for that type of facility, or maybe the economics don't work, or maybe the economics don't work in Portsmouth because the land values are so high, that it could be any of those right now. So I think that what we're probably really talking about is assisted living center, the facilities that are for six or more residents and that are now only allowed in the general business, gateway and business districts.
I gotta assume that has something to do with it, that there's a, it comes back to a certain scale of what's profit, not from the standpoint of even if they're run by a nonprofit, they've got to make, they've got to make more money than they pay out, I mean, to succeed. And with land values in Portsmouth, they're not gonna, someone's not going to come in with the idea of putting a small assisted living home generally here, it just, I don't think it makes sense. So I think probably the types of situations we would see are the bigger developments.
Right.
The assisted living centers.
Centers, right.
Or these, you know, CCRCs, residential care facilities. So then you get to the idea of, well, where can you fit them? I mean, they presumably require just at a, at a minimum, a certain amount of land that in a lot of the residential districts in Portsmouth would be very hard to find. And so, you know, I think inevitably it's going to be problematic. Again, I think places like the gateway, I totally see that if you look at it now, it doesn't, the idea of suddenly putting an assisted living facility somewhere in the gateway district doesn't, may not seem appealing, but if you're, if you look at it from the standpoint of what the purpose behind the gateway was.
Right.
It could be a very interesting part of what we perceived as this sort of new, you know, whole new vision for that area with commercial and residential, and so again, it may be logical for a lot of reasons that residential in Portsmouth ultimately for the types of projects you would see are going to be very hard to move forward in residential districts around.
So it seems, it seems that one big question that needs to be addressed, I mean, I guess we're sort of starting from a very theoretical point of view, and one big question that needs to be addressed to get us away from that theoretical point of view is, how big does an assisted living facility have to be?
Right.
In this day and age, to be, to create a new one? I mean, there are, there are existing ones out there, that we've identified three of them that are out there that are, that are functioning fairly well. How big does one have to be if you're, if somebody's going to create one right now? And how much land does this imply? And then where is there land that fits that description?
Exactly.
I think that depends on what district it's in.
Well, but.
More urban type style development.
Right. Yeah, but if you're talking about the downtown where we allow 60-foot height, high building, that could be compressed fairly small. If you're talking about a single residence district where they can only be 35 feet high, then you're talking about a more spread out area. Right, so that's, that's, that's a good point.
Has anyone come forward at all thinking of building one of these in downtown? Has anyone come to the planning department?
No. Again, nobody, nobody has come, aside from the continuing care thing that we had a couple of years ago, I don't think anybody has approached us for anything since then. So this is a, this is a looking ahead kind of thing, it's, you know, planning ahead for, for a wide variety of housing and making sure that we have, I think the concern at the, at the city council was that we have those facilities available as, as the population ages, but there is, to our knowledge, no pressing demand from the private sector to build these things here.
And the question is, why? I think the, I think almost market research and trying to find out, why haven't we had much interest in it?
And it may be because we've, we've been in a recessionary period generally. I mean, I know that, I know that times have not been that good for these, you know, in the last, in the last few years. So, I won't say that. I will say that I know that, that more of the continuing care retirement communities have not been filling up as much as they, the established ones are fine, the newer ones are having, are having difficulty filling up. So I'm not sure that's the case with assisted living facilities or not. And it probably varies by area of the country, too.
Councilor Clayber?
Another thing we discussed at the council level was the need for nursing home beds. It seems like facilities, I think the Mark Wentworth home does not have them anymore. When they did their renovation, they did away with the nursing home beds. So, and the reason why facilities don't want to have nursing home beds is they're much more expensive than an assisted living or an independent living. So I guess maybe that could be part of the marketing study, is how many nursing home beds do we think we're going to need? Again, you know, we're, we're baby boomers, we're living longer, we're probably going to be disabled in some way, and we're going to need a nursing home bed, we're going to need that Alzheimer's bed, I mean, my, my guess is, is that the demand for that kind of facility is going to increase. And I guess we're not really talking about nursing home here, are we? We're just talking about assisted living.
But that's a good point, I think, to look at the various pieces of assisted living and what.
And I think what you find, I mean, and this was, this was very much part of our discussion when we were talking about the continuing care retirement community, because they had, I think we pushed them to have more of a nursing.
Nursing, yeah.
Facility, because they really, you know, these, the, the developments really go for the independent living part of it, because that's, you know, that's the easiest part to serve. But again, I know of facilities where they were built with a certain ratio and they found that they needed more nursing, as they, so they've had to expand, and they've had to expand nursing because the, the, the promise that they give to their residents is you'll be able to age in place and go from independent living to assisted living to skilled nursing care. And what happens is they can't move up a level, and so they're held back in, in their previous level and have to have special services come in and help them because they, there isn't a, they're in independent living and they can't get to assist, or they're in a system, they can't get to skilled nursing because there aren't enough facilities provided. And I think that's, you know, that gets to that whole thing about the expense of Medicaid, Medicaid facilities versus non-Medicaid and all of that, you really have to have the, you really have to, there's a shortage of nursing care facilities, I guess that's what I want to say, and it's easier to do the, the lower level.
Well, that begs your point you mentioned earlier about, just as we do bonuses for housing affordability, why not, why aren't there bonuses for nursing affordability?
Good thought.
Yes. And I would think a market study would include looking at sort of the present situation, number of beds and who we're serving and where they are and issues of, you know, zoning district and lot size and some of those issues. Yes, Scott.
When you look at these dimensions, and we look at SRA and SRB, and we're just thinking about what we've just been talking about, about the setbacks and what's safe, I'm wondering whether a depth of 200 feet or 100 feet, and here's where Rick comes in handy here, is really realistic whether you want more.
And, and if we were to do that, if we were to say we want to have assisted living centers in the SRA and SRB districts, I think at that point we'd be adding another section to our supplemental regulations, saying this type of, you know, we, again, it gets to what you were talking about earlier, about increasing the setbacks based on the size of the, of the facility or something like that. So if you've got a, you know, 20,000 square foot facility, then maybe you're doubling your setbacks or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
That type of thing. And maybe having a, you know, getting to what William was saying about open space, having a, an open space, a larger open space percentage requirement or something like that. So I think that, that if we, it, it does go back to figuring out where land might be available, and then figuring out what the appropriate density is and coverage and setbacks that were, that are compatible with that neighborhood. And you're not, probably, I would suggest that you're probably not talking about increasing any building heights. You know, with the continuing care retirement community proposal, there was an increased building height over the building height, it wasn't over the height that was allowed in that district, because there was a 60-foot height allowed in that district, but it was over the height, it was an increased height over the adjacent residential district. And I would think that we'd probably be wanting to at least stay within the existing heights, the 35-feet foot height in the, talking about two and a half story buildings in the, in the residential districts and maybe three-story buildings in the mixed residential districts, although I can't imagine, since our mixed residential districts are so small, I can't imagine finding a place where this would go in any of the mixed residential districts. So, you know, there are going to be limited, we're pretty built out, and that's why we don't see very many subdivisions here. There's not that many large pieces of land.
John?
Do you kind of start off, though, with the lifestyle of the assisted living person and, and then work out your land requirements around that and then see what fits? I mean, once again, I, it makes no sense to have an assisted living spot where one of the residents decides to take a break with her walker and goes out on a Maplewood Avenue and gets run over. I mean, it's.
Right, no, I think that the, I think that, well, I think a guide is, again, going back to our existing facilities, the three that we have, Mark Wentworth and Edgewood and Clipper, I mean, those are, maybe that's, maybe if we're thinking about assisted living facilities, maybe that's what we should be doing is, again, looking at what the current market conditions are, because I don't know whether the current market conditions would allow you to build those right now. But if they would, maybe looking at those and saying, this is the model for what we this is the model for what we want, and where we might want to have it. So, and then, again, we're, we're limited by the number of potential sites.
Right, right.
William?
There's something else, though, for the market research, maybe idea is that, talking a lot about setbacks, open space, maybe not living on busy streets or byways, almost like, what do the residents prefer? Some of the examples listed, these places are setback, hidden in fields or woods. Is that what the residents who want to live there, be part of? Do they want to be setback from, maybe it's quieter, maybe they, that's the type of lifestyle they want, maybe they don't want to be anywhere near busy? That's something to...
And maybe what you're saying is that where we have them zoned for right now is the wrong place to have them zoned for. We should maybe take them out, maybe, and, and it kind of raises, I think you, you raised the issue too, this whole issue of, and Brian raised it, the issue of, of, you know, walkability, do we, actually, you didn't raise it, because you actually hit the opposite, the opposite point of view. But, and we can have all of this stuff, but the, that we have, the areas where we have it right, zoned for right now are the most intense traffic areas in the city. And the areas where they're built are the quietest, quietest areas, so...
Right. And some, something like, the Wentworth isn't setback right now, it's fully...
But it's a quieter...
It's on the pond, you know.
Yeah, it's a quieter area of town, though, too.
Right.
It's not on Route 1, not on Maplewood, not, you know?
Yeah. Dave?
Yeah. Rick, what is the, the Betty's Dream facility? What is that characterized as?
That is...
Good question.
It's assisted, I would say that's assisted living, too, because most of the residents can get out and get around. It's targeted to a non-elderly population. It's targeted, I think, to ages 21 to 55. So it's for a particular group of disabled people, rather than for seniors. But it is an assisted living facility.
Yeah, because I, I think that speaks to what, what John brought up. I think, I think there, there are consistently issues with them traveling to and from the areas where they want to get to, which is the grocery store and whatnot, and crossing Woodbury Avenue, and those types of issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, to, to William's point and that point, I think, in the, the situation of Riverwoods, I, I think that's one option. It's, it's an option to people shopping for assisted living, sort of the serene landscape tucked away. But I think there is also the population out there that wants the ability to not necessarily be on Route 1, but closer to convenience retail, or a, a real neighborhood with parks and so forth. So I think it's about striking a balance between having more than one option.
Right.
For a type of assisted living facility.
There are some facilities, I think, there's a facility, I believe, in Arlington, Massachusetts, which is like right downtown, and people can walk across the street to the, the drugstore. So it's that type of thing.
Just out of interest, how, how old are the facilities that exist currently? I mean, the Mark Wentworth home was quite, wasn't it a bequest to establish it? I mean, a long, long time ago. Edgewood, how long has it been there? When was it built?
I don't know.
A long time.
Yeah, a long time.
Long time.
Well, it would have been the seventies.
Oh.
Edgewood.
Edgewood was the seventies?
Yeah, because in the sixties, we ran cross-country through the woods there.
So what was it before?
Woods.
And was, but was it a single parcel? Was it, was it purchased for that purpose? Was it given for that purpose?
I'm not sure. Might have been a single parcel. In the Hutchinson property.
They might have even sold off the frontage part, frontage parcels, right? There's a couple of parcels in front.
I don't know where the Elks is, going toward the Elks.
Right. Well, the one house, the Stucko house.
I don't know where they are.
But at the time, that area was maybe not quite, that, that street that's right near it, Parkhurst, or whatever, it was not...
Yep.
Built out at the end. I think it was kind of pretty, I don't believe it was, all the way to the end. Maybe not.
Might have been.
Uh, it could have been.
Might have been a home daycare down at the end there, that I might remember.
I'm thinking it goes back to, like, the seventies, late seventies, mid seventies.
I know this is a ridiculous comment, but when we were looking at sites for the middle school, when we were looking, when, we're always looking for sites for affordable housing, we always say, why can't we go to Pease? You know? And we have not been successful in any attempt, but, you know, there's still some, some lots left at Pease, and that could be a very nice location.
Yeah, I think the state does not want residential.
And, and, and it would be, it would be isolated, too. I mean, there would be no other residents around it.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to walk anywhere.
Right, lacking services, yeah.
Yeah. It's got, it's got the land, but that's what it's got.
Right.
When you made the reference to Yelkins, were you talking about the piece that is not, doesn't have any plan for it yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. So there's a couple acres there that they're, that they're holding back for a 20,000 square foot retail use, undefined, and, but that could easily be, and I, I was, I was actually hoping when they came in to develop, that rather than develop the strip center that they're, that they're doing, that they would do something under our gateway provisions.
Right.
Because they could have gotten higher density and mixed use, and, and mixed-in residences in there, and it would have been a much more interesting development.
And a showcase.
And a showcase for the community. But they really just want to do the same old stuff. A drive-through bank and a drive-through pharmacy, you know?
The old same, mhm.
How, how was that zoned? That, I mean, would we have to change the...
No, it's zoned gateway. It's zoned, and when we, and when we adopted the gateway zoning...
That's disappointing.
That was a site that we looked at and said, this is a prime site for a really high-quality development. And unfortunately...
Missed opportunity.
Yeah. That's a nice...
But we, we still could do it for the piece in back.
Yes, you could, but you wouldn't, yeah, you could do it, but it wouldn't have the same kind of...
It's so small, leftover.
Yeah.
It's like a leftover.
It's chopped up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talking about dangerous...
Other thoughts, questions?
Where do we go from here?
Well, it sounds like, boy, it's only been an hour.
Right.
It's, not that we have to use two hours. It sounds like that you've given me some ideas for the questions that I need to answer, which are, I need to find out, learn, I need to learn more about assisted living facilities, to see whether, what the, what the scales, the economically feasible scales are, and if that, if those scales make sense for us. I mean, if, you know, obviously, if we say that the only thing we can get is 100 units, and there's no place we want to put 100 units, then that would be potentially our report back to the city council, is that, no, let's not, let's not do that. But if we find that, you know, that 20 units make sense, and there are some parcels in the city where 20 units would make sense, that are in nice residential areas, that are, that could be fit in like, like Edgewood or something like that, then maybe we could focus in on whether there's enough, whether that's worth enough, whether there are enough, whether there's enough potential there to make it worth making a zoning change. You know, so that's, that's, I think that's what we're talking about. So I need to report back to you on that. So I need to, I need to find out something more about the, the economics of these facilities, including demand, something more about existing parcels in the city where they might be appropriate. And then if I find something that makes sense there, come back to you with some suggestions for how we might look at zoning. But I, I don't get the sense that, yet, that the board is, has a strong feeling one way or the other about this.
Right.
You're still just exploring.
We're open, we need more information.
I don't have a strong directive to say, go out and find us a way to, to accommodate assisted living.
Right.
We're just, we're just, we're still just talking about it.
Needs to fit and be appropriate, I think.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Any final thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, I'm a very visual person, as far as understanding things, and maybe this is too much to ask for, but I think it would help to understand what different types of facilities actually look like, and how they fit on a site.
Sure.
You know, current examples, not necessarily having to be in the area, but just from a ver, from a form-based standpoint.
Yep. And I think that it makes a lot of sense to, to look at, at the context, I used to say, how they fit in, and both, both here and other places. And really, again, just focusing on assisted living facilities. And that's, I think that's all we're talking about, really, right now. We're not talking about...
Okay.
Nursing homes, we're not talking about age-restricted housing, senior housing.
It's a good reminder.
Yeah, just talking about assisted living facilities, so...
Right. In terms of context, all these issues of setback and open space, and sort of streets and things like that.
It's really ideal.
Yep.
Right.
Well, thank you for starting to get us thinking.
Well, thank you. It's taken us a long time. When, when did you bring this to us? It was like April or...
Yeah, it was a while ago, six months ago, maybe?
Yeah.
We've been busy.
And we're getting busier.
Yeah.
So what's coming for next week?
Next week, we have two carryover site plan issues. The Madison Street Townhouse easement issue, which we hope to get resolved, and something else. And then we have a site plan on International Drive for three office buildings. A request from Portwalk for subsurface soil tiebacks under our streets. We have the cinema at South Gate Plaza, Nine Screen, Nine Screen Cinema, IMAX. But we don't have a traffic report, a traffic review yet, so we may have to defer that. We have four or five conditional use permits, which, all over the city...
Wet.
Wet ones, yeah. We have, we have to come back to the city council referral on the cemetery setbacks, the referral on the easement over the Connie Bean property, the, we have a new city council referral that I think will be voted on, on Monday. It hasn't even come to the city council yet, but it's a, it's a referral for, what is it? It's for, oh, Historic District Commission exemptions.
Oh, right.
Oh, yeah.
The zoning changes. We have the zoning for the Connie Bean property, which we have to talk about. That shouldn't take too long. And there's some other things out there, too.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, so...
There'll be a coffee break at 11 o'clock.
Yeah. Going to roll out cots.
Needless to say, John Ritchie will be chairing that.
Although he's recusing himself a tour then, so...
That's right. He'll be in charge. So, okay, well, thanks for the little warning. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks.